Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, Public Meeting Tuesday, March 21st, 2017. The time is now 7:25. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice of this meeting was published on December 1st, 2016, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the December 2nd, 2016, issues of the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall-Bolton Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present mayors except for Commissioner Rogers, he's absent, excused this evening.
Before we get to agenda items and have some special guests here and some presentations, I would like to turn the mic over to Commissioner Tucci, which is an afrophone. So just tell us a little bit about our new sound system.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have just replaced our sound system, you can probably hear the difference, alright? And we're not done yet, we're gonna see if we can get some baffling to stop some of the echoing because of the shape of this roof. But this is a long overdue improvement because we were constantly getting comments that people couldn't hear what the commissioners were saying, and even at Planning Board and Zoning Board meetings, it was difficult. So with this new state-of-the-art system, everyone should be able to hear us crystal clear. And it's probably, for as long as I can remember, and I asked the mayor if he thought it was 100 years, we don't know if it was 100 years since they replaced the mics, but it's been an awful long time. So any feedback you can give us, if you can hear us clearly, that's great. If you can't, just let us know and we'll see what we need to do to correct that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Petrakko.
Thank you. Tonight, we have a proclamation for our good friend of mine and really unbelievable police officer, Sergeant Mike Padilla. I'd just like to talk a little bit about what he does for the Nutley Police Department before I read the proclamation, but I'll say this, that it's always a team effort with Michael, so I'm sure he's a little taken back about having his name on this. But just going around town with him and most of the children that I see here tonight probably know Mike Padilla because he coaches, he's much part of the community. I actually had the pleasure of going to my son's second grade class on Dr. Seuss Week, and I brought Michael along, and it was amazing how the kids get the thumbs up signs and all the sign language that Mike does with them and how they know him. So it's really a tribute to you and your family, Mike, for everything that you do for the police department. It's really a pleasure to have somebody that's such part of the community, you know, which you are, you know, in more ways than one. You know, Mike is the, probably should be the poster man, I didn't say poster child, but poster man for the reason why kids run to cops instead of away from them, because you're always sticking your hand out to them. So it's a proclamation that's well deserved, and I'll read it now. Whereas Michael Padilla started in the Nutley Police Department on January 22nd, 2001, and whereas after demonstrating a keen eye for investigations, Mike was moved from Patrol to Detective Bureau on January 6th, 2010, and to Juvenile Bureau in August of 2012. And whereas a part of his involvement in the Juvenile Bureau, Mike strives to find alternate ways to reach the youth in Nutley by finding innovative and effective programs including extremely popular Junior Police Academy, PALS police at Lunchwood students, and has most recently introduced the LEAD Law Enforcement Against Drugs program to the sixth grade classrooms in Nutley School District. Whereas under Mike's leadership, the LEAD program has become an integral part of the drug education curriculum and has opened the door to building a strong positive police presence in the schools. And whereas, as part of his commitment to this program, Mike brought his enthusiasm and determination to the LEAD program at the national level and was part of the core group that oversaw the implementation of LEAD programs in the curriculum of New Jersey schools. And whereas, an appreciation and recognition of his commitment to the program, the National LEAD Program, has designated him as the 2017 LEAD Administrator of the Year. That's saying in a mouthful, that's a national recognition. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Michael Padilla be congratulated for being named LEAD Administrator of the Year and also be acknowledged and thanked for his unwavering commitment to the youth in the township of Nutley. Let's hear it for Mike Padilla. Mike, we're gonna take a picture, I'm sure, but would you like to come up to the mic, the podium, and say a few words before we take a picture? You're not lost for words. On my mics coming up, I'd just like to welcome, I see some of our Nutley police officers in the back, led by Captain Jerry Green back there. Thanks for coming, guys.
Is the green light on? That's good? Okay. I would like to start off by saying thank you to the Board of Commissioners for all the time and effort that you put into making Nutley the truly special place that it is. I've been fortunate to work and live in a town where things actually get done by people who care about those they serve. When Commissioner Petrakko, Chief Stromlough, and Captain Green wanted to start prevention programs in our schools, we all agreed that it had to be more than just say no. The search was on for something that not only educated kids on drug prevention, but also had a character component. After an extensive search, LEAD was the only program that met all of our expectations. With lessons on goal-setting, decision-making, effective communication, and conflict resolution, we're not just telling them to say no, we're teaching them how and why. I'm lucky to have Dr. Glazer and Ms. Powell as point people in the schools. Together, we've been able to get LEAD and other programs off the ground almost seamlessly. I am only in front of you today because of the hard work of all of the Nutley police officers, many of which are seen in and out of uniform, making a difference in our town every day. I would like to specifically thank LEAD Officers Tom Shank, Steve Rogers, Rick Schwartz, and Chris Malili for their dedication to the program. It takes a lot of time and preparation to get in front of a class and teach, much of which they do on their own time. They have changed the kids' reaction from "Why are the cops here?" to high fives, thumbs up, and smiles whenever we walk through the doors. If you want to know what it feels like to be a rock star, walk into a school one of those guys. I would like to add that there isn't much I could get done without the help of Dana Malillo, Sandra Corella, Linda Diaches, and Adam Jurnick. They're the people I lean on to make it all work. I would also like to thank my family and my wife, Jeanette, because without her, there could never be a me. Last but not least, thank you, the residents of Nutley, for showing your support for everything we do. And while the world is out looking for their next leaders here in Nutley, we'll just keep making them. Thank you.
Absolutely. It's great, I can, my mic, my, last time, my mic, I had my mouth basically on it. Now I can probably go in the back room and speak and be heard, which is wonderful. So thank you for the new microphone, I appreciate it very much. Officer, you know, a couple things. One, in your comments, you shared that basically that no one does it alone. And I commend you for recognizing those around you that help you stand tall within the community. I also wanted to reflect on a moment, a comment that Commissioner Petrakko said, and I think it's something that is, all officers should aspire to, and that's to be someone that the citizens of Nutley want to run to. So I commend you for that, because that's an extraordinary level of leadership and commitment to actually win the trust of the community to be able to achieve that. So congratulations.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes. Congratulations, Michael. Your involvement with the youth of this town is second to none. As you know, in the Recreation Department, we come in contact with many of our youngsters. You get them at different stages, and your guidance and your leadership in this area is superior. I just want to thank you on behalf of all of the parents in Nutley and encourage you to continue all the great work that you're doing. Congratulations, well deserved.
Thank you, Commissioner. Michael, again, congratulations. It's a great honor, and it was a great, great thing to see you in action down at Washington School a month or so ago. We had the governor come in, which was a great honor. And to see you guys in action, see that early intervention with kids in teaching them, you know, what the dangers are of even starting to experiment with drugs. So you and your team should be commended, along with Commissioner Petrakko, in initiating this program within the schools. So congratulations and good luck with everything. Commissioner?
I'd just like to, again, congratulate Michael. I'd like to thank his wife, which I probably haven't done in the nine years that I'm up here, for being able to steal him away from you and your daughters many, many nights. It's really, you know, Mike, you're just what I think an elected official should be, not even a police officer, how you go out and how popular you are amongst the kids, it's amazing to me. Like I said, walking into my son Salvatore's class, it was a little bittersweet that Michael was a little more popular with the kids than I was at the time. But, you know, a great job, kudos to your family. And really, you know, Mike strives on always making sure I say this, it's not a one-man event with him, it's always a team effort, he always gives accolades to his team, which is really big of you. So without anything else, should we take a picture? Come up for a picture, Mike?
(Applause) (Mumbling) 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 Okay, we have a couple more presentations. Commissioner Tucci?
Thank you, Mayor. This is definitely a night that we're celebrating Nutley. This next resolution is being presented to a group of young ladies and their coaches for a feat that is nothing short of amazing. And I'm sure it's only the beginning, and it's going to continue. Not that I'm looking to put any pressure on you, but your track record is excellent, and we have high expectations for you. So having said that, whereas the girls' seventh grade basketball team has enjoyed outstanding success over the past three seasons, posting a league record of 42 wins and no losses.[958.62][958.62](Applause) And whereas the members of the girls' seventh grade basketball team are Rebecca Echeverria, Rachel Echeverria, Mackenzie Albert, Alexandra Toomey, Julia Scheidel, Leah DeMayo, Natalie Rafino, Mia Garrity, Sidney Hess, Stephanie Liberto, Jenna Gardner, and Patricia Columbia Walsh, and whereas head coach Joyce Bukowicz, with assistant coach Dave Scheidel worked tirelessly to train and guide these athletes, and whereas the members of the seventh grade basketball team were the suburban travel basketball division and league champions for the third consecutive year in undefeated fashion, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, join with the citizens of Nutley to honor and congratulate the members and coaches of the girls' seventh grade basketball team for their exceptional efforts and accomplishments. I so proudly move this resolution.[1027.41][1027.41](Applause)
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrakko?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Joyce, would you like to come up, you and Dave, and say a few words on behalf of our girls?
Sure. Well, thank you so, so much for honoring us, we really, we feel really special.
You are.
Oh, thank you. When you were talking about it takes a team to do things, honestly, we can't do anything. Coach Dave and I, we show up to practice, that's all we do, but you know, we can't do anything unless the parents get the kids there. And Ryan fits us the gym a lot. And all the kids come up and come and show up to play and work really hard. This group of girls are, they're beautiful people, they love each other. Whether they're in the game or not in the game, they're always cheering for each other, they share the ball so beautifully. Honestly, every game, parents from other teams come up to us and tell me, "Oh my gosh, we love watching your team." The refs congratulate me after every game, "Your team plays beautiful, they're such a nice, respectful team." And I'm really, 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 they're extraordinary, every one of them, and they're great at other schools too, so they should make, do great things in high school, and beyond, hopefully. So thank you very much, and Coach Dave, you're awesome.
Thank you.
Coach Dave is awesome too, by the way. He's won a lot of games that I probably would have blown, he wins the games too. So, thank you so much, thank you, thank you.
Girls, please come up for a picture. Commissioner Petrakko, you want to say a couple words?
I would love to.
Should we take the picture and then say a few words, maybe? Are there, because they're up here? No, they can, they'll hear you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Guys, I'd like just to say a few things, if I may. I did make the last year's championship, which you guys won, obviously, because you are still undefeated. I know last year's championship was very exciting. I know Coach Dave gives a thousand percent all the time, and it's really a tribute to the parents and the coaches, but I do have to say one thing about Joyce. I have to tell you, I've been, I didn't always look like this, girls. At one time, I actually played basketball for Nutley High School as well, and I always kid around with Joyce, and I say that I could, I would be able to beat her back in the day on a game of 101, but I'm not so sure about that now. But one thing I could tell you, because I've been around basketball and baseball most of my life, you're never gonna get coaches like you have here in Nutley. Joyce is one of the best coaches I have ever seen, and it's really a tribute to you and Dave, why these girls have been so successful. And like in the deli the other day, Joyce, you know, the thing that I'm big on with coaches is not just the lessons that you learn on the courts and on the fields here in Nutley, but it's what follows you here afterwards. And I know Coach Dave and Coach Joyce are big on that. So someday, when you guys are out and about, outside of Nutley, and yous are adults, yous are having some struggles in your life, you'll think of your coaches and say, "They didn't teach us how to quit, they didn't teach us how to give up." And you guys will always be winners because of coaches and parents like you have, so congratulations to everyone.[1277.78][1277.78](Applause)
Commissioner Evans?
I just want to add my thanks, coaches, congratulations. Thank you for your dedication. Girls, we look forward to seeing you back here next year, alright? So there's a commitment, this is an IOU to the next year's picture. You know, I just echo some of the points, is that you look forward to this when you're an adult, especially all the stories and the memories that it brings. And when you're older, you know, pay it forward to the next generation that comes behind you. Help them grow to become the champions that you've become.
Thank you, Commissioner. Girls, and I tell this to all the teams that we bring here, look at the girls next to you, because in 30 or 40 years from now, they're still gonna be your friends because of what you went through on the athletic field or on the court. And your credit to your township, your families, and yourselves, and you should all be proud, and congratulations to you and your coaches and your mother, your mom and dad. So, great, thank you.
At the risk of being redundant, girls, you are absolutely amazing. We are so proud of you. And you know, in the rec department, we have a lot of teams in a lot of sports, you are absolutely at the top of that list, you are phenomenal. And your coaches, they epitomize what we look for in coaches, because they're not only knowledgeable about the game, but they're knowledgeable about life and how to raise and how to guide young adults such as yourself. So again, I'd like to thank Joyce and Dave for everything that you do off the court in addition to this phenomenal record on the court. So thank you very much.[1393.33][1393.33](Applause) And now, we will take that picture.[1398.71][1398.71](Laughter)
(Mumbling) 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 (Mumbling)
I'd like to talk, Commissioner. Where you want to put me?
Come on back.
I will steal a tart silence. Come on, Chris. Go in here.
Congratulations. Dave, congratulations.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you so much. Good old basket.
All right, Commissioner, one more, last but not least. All right, here we go. To round out the family night here. And this next individual is someone who, when you engage him in conversation, will tell you what he thinks, and always tells you from the heart, and always speaks about what's in the best interest of this township. So, it's with great pride that I present this resolution. Whereas John Monaco established the Personal Touch Florist located at 343 Franklin Avenue in Nutley in 1986, and whereas John has been setting the standard in floral arrangements and design by providing superior service to our community for over 30 years, through his artistic imagination and floral artistry, and whereas John attended the College for Engineering while working as a driver in a floral shop, when he discovered his calling as a floral designer, and whereas a Personal Touch Florist continues to showcase community spirit by donating their time, energy, and talent to community organizations and nonprofit groups, and whereas John and his wife Diane have two beautiful children, Christopher and Julianne, and reside in neighboring Lynnhurst, New Jersey, and whereas a Personal Touch Florist celebrated 30 years of floral innovation at the same location on November 9, 2016, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, join with the citizens of Nutley to congratulate John Monaco of a Personal Touch Florist for his 30 years of dedicated service to this community. John, thank you very much for all that you do.
John, thank you for everything that you do. I know, in order to be a proprietor in Nutley, you also have to be very generous and supportive of the community. And that doesn't go unnoticed by the commissioners. So, thank you for everything that you've done over these years, and your generous support of our community.
Commissioner Patraco?
Have to get used to hitting these buttons on these new mics. As I said when I walked in, John, you know what? Being a merchant here myself, since 1990, I know the struggles that we all go through. I know the commitment to the business that you have to, always make your business come first, sometimes even before your family. So, kudos to your wife, for putting it up with it all these years, and I could imagine the family parties that you missed, and the birthdays, and all that stuff. But, you know what? Every time somebody goes by your store on Franklin and Chestnut, you know, I always see you out there, if it's not getting the snow blower started, or, you know, you always have a smile on your face, and you're always waving to the cars, because you're very popular here in Nutley, because everybody knows you, because they know what you do for the town and all your customers. So, congratulations. It's an honor, well deserved.
Thank you, Commissioner. John, congratulations, 30 years. Not some of the best economic times that we've had over the last 30 years, so congratulations on being able to survive for 30 years, and be an integral part of our community. He's my florist, so I'm happy to say that. So, congratulations, and 30 more, right, John?
John, as a fellow business owner, I know how hard it is sometimes to make ends meet, especially in our off-seasons, and we all have off-seasons. And we know the demands that the Nutley community puts on its business community. And I have never known you to deny anyone, all right, or to turn anyone away. And I thank you for your generosity. I thank you for the beautiful flowers and flower arrangements that you've put together for most of us, if not all of us, over the years. And I know you've bailed me out of several occasions, on several occasions, with your beautiful flowers. And I just want to thank you for your commitment to this township, and for everything that you do for our students and everyone here. So, thank you very much, and congratulations.
Commissioner, you need to...
We need to, we need a motion?
Move that second and go around, go to roll.
I will move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
All right, so let's go to our regular agenda minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor, we have regular meeting minutes for February 7, 2017, and February 21, 2017.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
Communications?
Holy Family Church has submitted an event application to hold their Palm Sunday procession on Sunday, April 9, 2017, from 11:15 to 11:50, starting at 174 Franklin Avenue, and ending at 28 Brookline Avenue in Nutley. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Nutley Thriving Survivors has submitted an event application for their annual walk to be held on Friday, October 6, 2017, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., beginning and ending at John H. Walker Middle School. Need a motion?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications, Mayor.
Before we get to bills, I see Donna Pontarrero here, who wanted to make an announcement about our good friend Annie Rattunda. So, Donna?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm here, I just want to give a little bit of a background. I'm here representing our committee, Operation Annie, and the rest of my committee is sitting back there. They've elected me to come up here. Some of you, everybody knows Annie, but some people in this room may not, so I just want to give a little bit of a background. Annie Rattunda is a lifelong Nutley resident. She was diagnosed in 2013 with acute myeloid leukemia. Three years ago, along with the Nutley Board of Commissioners, we held a bone marrow drive at the Nutley Health Department for her. The turnout was successful, although it did not produce a match for Annie. Fortunately, Annie went into remission, and a transplant was not needed. Just recently, she was re-diagnosed with AML, and the need for a match has become a priority. Annie is currently in the hospital and receiving chemo, and will be there for at least another three weeks. Annie has been the Director of the Nutley Special Young Adults for the past 38 years, and has dedicated her entire life to these special needs adults. She's been a very active member of our community, and has been honored with many awards for countless hours of volunteering, and the kind generous person that she is. I've had the privilege of calling her my friend for the past 15 years, and watched her give selflessly to others. We have a bone marrow drive scheduled for Tuesday, March 28, between the hours of 2:30 and 8:00 p.m., and it will be at the Public Affairs Building. We're hoping to find a match for her. There are certain requirements to be able to join the registry and to come that day. You need to be between the ages of 18 and 44, and in good health. There is an interest of people over the age of 44 that have contacted us, and you can still become a member of the registry, if you're over the age of 44, but under the age of 60. So, the requirement for that would be, you can go online at BeTheMatch, and fill out the paperwork there. They will send you a test kit. There is a charge for it, there's a $100 charge for that test kit. We are, the chances of getting a donor match are 1 in 430. So, you may not be a match for Annie, but you may be a match for somebody else. It's a good thing all around. Joining the registry is a very simple process. Most people are not aware of what the process is. It's just a swabbing of your cheek to get some cells, and then they test from there to see who you match. Really takes 10 minutes. The paperwork is what takes just a little bit longer. We are in communication with some organizations in town that have expressed interest in helping us fundraise. And the reason we would like to do a little bit of fundraising is, some people are interested in joining the registry. However, there is cost for the match, the test kit, if they're over 44. So, we would like to try and offset the cost. We've had a couple of individuals and some businesses who are interested in giving us a monetary donation for that. We will be also planning a blood drive for her, and at that same day, we're gonna try and do another bone marrow drive for her. We came here, we would like to have the Commissioner's support in trying to find a match for Annie, and anything that you could possibly do to help us would be appreciated. I'm here to answer any questions, any requests.
Donna, what's the time again? It's Tuesday, April 28?
Tuesday, March 28.
March 28.
March 28, from 2:30 to 8:00 p.m.
2:30 to 8:00 p.m.
Yes.
At the Public Affairs Department?
Yes, in the Health Department, yeah.
There is not a better person out there than Annie Rattunda, who gives herself, not only to this township, but to her kids. And I am urging, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, that everybody listening out there, anybody between those ages, please come out. If you're over the age, go online. We need your help, and Annie needs your help, and she deserves your help.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
Mayor, I think you summed it up. There's a lot of people who are watching us tonight, who will see this tape when it's released, and that will be before the date for the collection. So, I encourage, as well, that anyone who is listening, anyone here, really consider supporting Annie. I echo any comments, anything anybody can say about Annie, she's just a wonderful human being.
Thank you.
Donna, Annie Rattunda is one of the most giving individuals I have ever met in my life. Not only has she dedicated her life to her special young adults, she's also a major, major part in our Relay for Life, which is the American Cancer Society's signature event. And she's a big part of the reason why, here in Nutley, we raised over a million dollars over a 10-year period. So, anything that I can personally do, and encourage anyone that I know, or anyone I come in contact with, to help Annie, I will absolutely do. She's a wonderful person, and we've dubbed her one of our Nutley Angels.
Commissioner?
I'll address you as doctor, of course, Dr. Donna. You know, morale says that angel word, and that's what I've always called Annie, because if she's not an angel for what she does, for all those kids, and it's unbelievable, if anybody's ever gone and visited SYA, it's really, God bless everyone down there, but I don't know how she's done it all these years. I could tell you, going through a little episode myself this year, it's much better to be a giver than be a recipient in something like this. So, I'm gonna leave it at that. Just get up off your couch, and trust me when I say, it's much better to be a giver in this instance. So, make a special trip down there, and do what's right, because God forbid you never know when the shoe could be on the other foot. So, Annie's a God-sent to our town, she's a giver, she has great friends around her all the time, like you, Donna, and everybody in the back. And it's really, this is what I think Nutley is all about, because when one of our own is down, that's when Nutley is its best, and that's when we rise up. So, again, please, I urge you all, get down there. Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
And just for the folks out there, I want to reiterate the date. It's March 28, at the Health Department, Public Affairs Building, on Chestnut Street, from 2:30 to 8:00 p.m. Even if you're over the age of 44, you are eligible. We are hoping to be able to have some computers there, and we can help you fill out the paperwork online, and the test kit will be sent to you. If you have any questions, you can call the Health Department, and you can ask to speak to Meredith. Meredith will be able to answer any of your questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, bills?
Yes, Mayor. Bill is for Tuesday, March 21, 2017. Public Affairs, $85,653.62. Revenue and Finance, $6,252,820.15. Public Safety, $37,209.06. Public Works, $435,170.74. Parks and Public Property, $230,921.23. Total Payroll, $851,168.88, for a grand total of $7,892,943.68.
Move the bills?
Need a second?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk, please read the notice.
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or Presiding Officer, the majority of the membership of the Board, shall determine that the interests of the forum, and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody like to address the Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements. Any announcements from the Board? Ordinance introductions. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have an ordinance introduction, number 3355, which is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits, and establish a cap bank. This is a recurring ordinance, we do it every year, and it's done in the anticipation that in a future two-year period, if we needed to exceed the allowable appropriation because of an extraordinary event, that we would have the capacity to do so. Historically, we have not actually reached the point in time where we had to do it, but it only creates a paper entry, it does not actually transfer to any tax burden onto the taxpayers, it's simply just a paper entry. Until such time, it hasn't need to be used. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun, together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on May 18, 2017. So move.
Second.
That's April 18, correct?
April 18.
April 18. Commissioner Tucci?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Tucci?
Call it real quick, aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk, please read the notice.
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or Presiding Officer, the majority of the membership of the Board, shall determine that the interests of the forum, and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody like to address the Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements. Any announcements from the Board? Ordinance introductions. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight I have an ordinance introduction, number 3355, which is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits, and establish a cap bank. This is a recurring ordinance, we do it every year, and it's done in the anticipation that in a future two-year period, if we needed to exceed the allowable appropriation because of an extraordinary event, that we would have the capacity to do so. Historically, we have not actually reached the point in time where we had to do it, but it only creates a paper entry, it does not actually transfer to any tax burden onto the taxpayers, it's simply just a paper entry. Until such time, it hasn't need to be used. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun, together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on May 18, 2017. So move.
Second.
That's April 18, correct?
April 18.
April 18. Commissioner Tucci?
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Tucci?
Call it real quick, aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk, please read the notice.
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or Presiding Officer, the majority of the membership of the Board, shall determine that the interests of the forum, and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody like to address the Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Public hearings. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, the Parks Department filed an application with New Jersey Transit for a vehicle with wheelchair liftgate capabilities to assist us in providing transportation to our seniors and folks who need that type of accommodation here in the township. And the project's going to be partially funded with the Federal Transit Authority, 5310 funds, under a grant that was submitted to the Federal Transit Administration. And this is a requirement to go along with the application. So, if there's any interested party who has a significant social, economic, or environmental interest, you're invited to provide comment within 30 days to the Township of Nutley, Wolf's End Municipal Clerk, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. If anyone has any comments, we'll be happy to hear them this evening.
Anybody like to comment during this public hearing?
Seeing none, I'll move that we close the public hearing.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Ms. Evans?
Aye.
Excuse me?
Would you like to comment on this application, sir?
Sure.
I think it's parking.
I think he's asking about the park.
I think it's parking.
It's worth us on the public hearing on Commissioner Tucci, so we're not to public comment on anything. So, we'll make sure you get up at the end of the meeting, all right?
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Do you have to move it, or no?
I'll move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Let's move on to resolutions. Commissioner Tucci did his already. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Whereas the Zoning Board of Adjustment received an escrow deposit in the amount of $10,550 from Forte Capital Management for a property located at Passaic Avenue in Kingsland, and whereas the escrow fee of $10,050 was collected and deposited in account T15910969, and whereas the Zoning Board of Adjustment has reviewed and determined that the balance of $525 is due to Forte Capital Management, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that the Township Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund escrow fees in the amount of $525 to Forte Capital Management. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Planning Board received an escrow deposit... ....................................................................................................................................
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Do you have to, to move it or no?
I'll move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Let's move on to resolutions, Commissioner Tucci did his already, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Whereas the Zoning Board of Adjustment received an escrow deposit in the amount of $10,550 from Forte Capital Management for property located at Pesake Avenue in Kingsland, and whereas the escrow fee of $10,050 was collected and deposited in account T15910969, and whereas the Zoning Board of Adjustment has received and determined, has reviewed and determined that the balance of $525 is due to Forte Capital Management, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley County of Essex, that the Township Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund escrow fees in the amount of $525 to Forte Capital Management, so move.
Second.
Mr. Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Planning Board received an escrow deposit in the amount of $2,700 from Cambridge Heights of Nutley for property located at One Cambridge Heights, and whereas the escrow fee of $2,700 was collected and deposited in account T15911939, whereas the Planning Board has reviewed and determined that the balance of $1,590 is due to Cambridge Heights of Nutley, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund the escrow fee in the amount of $1,590 to Cambridge Heights of Nutley, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Planning Board received an escrow deposit in the amount of $3,000 from RPR Enterprises LLC for the property located at 11-15 Baltimore Street, whereas the escrow fee of $3,000 was collected and deposited in account number T15911958, whereas the Planning Board has reviewed and determined that the balance of $3,000 is due RPR Enterprises LLC, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, that the Township Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund the escrow fee in the amount of $3,000 to RPR Enterprises LLC, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you Mayor.
Whereas bids for Park Avenue Improvement Project Section 3 were received and opened on Wednesday, June 10th, 2015, whereas AJM Contractors 300 Color Road Clifton, New Jersey was the low bidder, whereas the Township of Nutley entered into a contract with AJM Contractors in the amount of $252,870.10, whereas Change Order Number 1 was authorized on March 1st, 2016 by Resolution Number 63-16 for a decrease in the amount of $11,426.83 to be credited to Ordinance Number 3295A for a total contract price of $241,443.27. Whereas Change Order To, Number 2 has been authorized for a decrease in the amount of $3,026.40 to be credited to Ordinance Number 3295A for a total contract price of $238,416.87. Now therefore, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that Change Order Number 2 is attached, is a change from the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with AJM Contractors for the project known as Park Avenue Improvement Project Section 3, is hereby authorized and approved, I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. We will open up for public comment. Madam Clerk?
Yes Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone, provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comment to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer, the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Would anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Commissioner, I was told that this was going to be on the agenda, apparently I was not told the truth.
I'm sorry, can you just state your name and address, please?
Brian Givens, 65 Edison Avenue. If I may read a prepared statement. At last month's meeting concerning two hour parking ordinance on Edison and Oakley Terrace, you stated that if I can get a consensus of my neighbors as to how this should be handled. By overwhelming demand, residents, residents did not want the two hour signs taken down. Residents want the signs to remain up in order to deter New York commuters and future Osh residents parking on our residential streets. You stated that if I can get 51% of my neighbors to sign a petition agreeing to this change, you would be willing to either implement a sticker program or do so as a pilot program on our two street. As you are aware, two weeks ago, I submitted copies of petitions to all of you via email. Petition clearly indicates that even larger margin, majority than 51% people are in support of this program. Other towns and cities in New Jersey have this program in effect and it works well. As a matter of fact, our town already has a sticker program in place for high school students who drive to school and parking doesn't stand their lives. I'm certain that it could be easily implemented for students, it could easily be implemented for the taxpaying homeowners of Edison Avenue and Oakley Terrace. There are not, there are many streets in Nutley that are not under the two hour parking ordinance. Residents can park in their streets all day with no consequences. I ask you that bear for the same taxpaying homeowners to live on the streets with the ordinance to be in fear of receiving a ticket for parking on their own residential street when we're in two hours? I don't think so. And tonight, I am joined by many resident folks at Edison Avenue, Oakley Terrace, who don't, don't think so either. We have done everything that was asked of us and we would, we are here to request that this issue be resolved this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Mayor, I'd just like to comment on that if I may. Just, um, I just want you to realize that in order for us to go to a pilot program, to a sticker program, that would have to be voted on by the Board of Commissioners, correct Mayor?
I don't, I don't know.
I mean, Alan, would we have to do that by a resolution or?
I'm not sure, but we would have to discuss it for sure.
Okay, because I'll just say on the record that I'm in favor of doing something like that. I know we've talked about the overnight parking and, you know, we don't want to lift that and neither do I, but I think that, you know, the people there and on these streets, if we take them case by case, I think that they do deserve some type of relief. And I think the fear is, is that moving forward, there'll be, if we take down the signs, then they are in constant fear that the problem is going to reoccur. So I actually did not see the petition signed, did we get them Sam? So we have them, I'll take a look at that tomorrow, but we should have a meeting with the Board of Commissioners, just way we could see if we can get you guys into a sticker program. But I'll say on the record tonight, I am in favor of doing something, you know, to relieve some of that and the sticker program seems to me to be okay. Okay?
Thank you Commissioner. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none? Put a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Aye everybody.
And the time? The time is now at 22.